Called the November tenth, the City Council Redevelopment Agency meeting to order, please. And we have the pleasure tonight of having the Pledge of Allegiance led by Girl Scoot, Girl Scoot, sorry. All right, let's roll back. No, just kidding. Girl Scout troop number thirty-two, five forty-six. We're all set.
Make the audience please rise. Call guard advance. Call guard present the colors. Call guard post the colors. Please don't leave the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of God, with the love and justice for all.
Call guard, call guard three. Call guard dismissed.
Let's go. I'll be leading the mayor, I guess. Yeah. Thank you very much, parents, for coming as well. Thanks to the Girl Scout troop, that was fun. I love that salute. We'll have to start a City Council salute, I think, maybe for the next... All right, so we will move on to item number two, which is changes to the order of the agenda, and this request by staff, or public, or anybody on council. Any requests? Nope. Okay, and the agenda will stand as it is, and then we have a report from the closed session from City Attorney Bob Lanzon.
Actually, we do have one short report regarding the labor contracts that are on tonight's agenda from closed session, from Mr. Malp, our Administrative Services Director.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Jeff Malp, Administrative Services Director. Tonight in closed session, we discussed items six, B, D, and E on the consent calendar. These are three labor contracts that are before you this evening as part of the consent calendar. Just wanted to give a brief overview of those contracts. The first is with the Aspen Midmanagement Group. It's a two-year labor contract. It includes several new provisions and changes from the old contract. There's a three-and-a-half percent COLA in each of the two years. The contract proposes to tier the city's retirement plan from 2.7% at fifty-five to 2.5% at fifty-five for new hires on or after January first of two thousand and nine. There is a new sharing formula between the city and employees on the medical contribution that would call for a ninety-five, five percent split, the city paying ninety-five percent of the increase in the future, employees paying five percent with an eight percent cap the first year and a nine percent cap the second year on what the city is willing to contribute as part of the contract. There's a significant change in the retiree medical benefit under the longevity benefit section that tiers the benefit for future hires on or after January first of two thousand and nine from six hundred and ten dollars and increasing in retirement as it currently exists to three hundred and fifty dollars at retirement and not going up post-retirement. In addition to those changes, there were a few changes to the salary schedule that was attached to the original staff report. That's before you tonight. We presented it in closed session, and for those of you that didn't see it, we had it available as well up the dais. The confidential contract shares many of the same major provisions. It's, however, a three-year contract. It includes salary provisions, the first year of 3.25%, three-and-a-half percent the second year, and two-and-three-quarters percent the third year. The other provisions, in terms of retirement formula, 2.5 at fifty-five, that I discussed is the same. The medical benefit is virtually the same, with the exception that in the second year, as opposed to a nine percent cap, there's an eight percent cap, and then during the third year of the contract, there's a ninety-ten sharing arrangement with a seven percent cap. The major difference here is that the longevity recognition benefit that I talked about a moment ago doesn't exist at all for employees hired on or after January first, two thousand and nine in this group. All the major provisions I just discussed as part of the confidential group are the same for the management, the same cost of living adjustments, the same tiering of the retirement system, the same cost sharing and future medical increases, the same changes to the longevity benefit in terms of new hires within the management group won't receive that benefit. In addition, both the confidential and the management group gave up the pay-for-performance benefit in exchange for seventy-five percent of the top pay-for-performance benefit being added back to their salaries, so there were some cost savings there for the city. In addition to the mid-management changes that we had, the minor changes we had to the salary schedule, just corrections really, there were a couple of changes to the management salary schedule that's also up there before you, and there's a short memo on the confidential contract that is just talking about a cut-and-paste error that was made in the contract that was given to you on the tuition reimbursement section and the dental plan section. That's all I have to report at a closed session.
Very good. Thank you very much for that report. And with that, we'll move on to item number four, which is council communications and announcements. Councilmember Ramon?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Sure.
Yeah, I have actually two items. First report is for our, a report from our new finance ad hoc committee, Councilmember Ahmad, Mike Galvin, City Treasurer, and Jeff, our City Administration Manager, and myself. Our members, our goal was to study opportunities on, in the finance budgeting area of the city. On our first meeting, we brainstormed, came up with about twelve ideas. We've narrowed it down now after four meetings, and we were starting to work on, we think, the highest priority, the greatest benefit to the city, topics of how to improve budgeting, and secondly, financial reporting. You'll hear more about that, fellow councilmembers, here in the future, but we're looking at having very soon a kind of a high-level financial quarterly report, like a two-page summary, really high level, not only where we are and with budget, but where we're going, and also, again, on budgeting, we have some work to do and planned in that area so that by the time we get into budgeting in the springtime, late spring, we'll be able to implement, hopefully, some improvements to that cycle, too. My second short announcement here is, I, one of my responsibilities, I'm a member of the library, the San Mateo Library, JPA, which is a joint power authority. It's really an organization, a consolidation organization of twelve cities, in which we hire a separate organization to run the libraries in this county. We actually just, and let me just back up a little bit, just so you understand, when you go next door to the library, right next door to City Hall, the city provides the facility. We built that building several years ago. We provide the utilities and the lights, the janitorial service, basically the structure itself, but it's just JPA, the hard-working people of a director and staff and the actual employer, the employment of all of the people in the library that report to this JPA. We have, happy to announce, I attended a meeting this past month in which we met the new director, Martin Gomez. He was the director of the Brooklyn Library and more recently at Oakland, the director there, and we're very pleased to have him. It was a pleasure to meet him, and if anybody is very interested, we, of course, had that open house at Portola Valley last week. This Thursday, coming the thirteenth, there will be another reception for Martin at the Millbury, Millbrae Library from five to six P.M. So you're welcome to meet him, and again, the summary of the library is a very important part of the community, important part of San Carlos, and it's a very well-run organization.
Great. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Grisilli.
I'd love to know, Mr. Mayor.
And then I have one thing to report. I was part of a co-hosting team with Ted Lampert and Memo Morantes for California Alliance for the Arts, which is an association that's trying to start a pilot program concerning primarily arts in school, that's started in San Mateo County, sort of faction of that, to start to see how we can better align arts and education, and trying to bring together different civic and community leaders to support that effort. And we had that breakfast this week, and it's part of an ongoing effort. You may hear more about this as things move forward. All right, let's move on to item number five, which is public comment. This is for persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda tonight. They do so. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. However, I have no public speaking comments for this period of public comment. Anybody from the audience, they'd like to approach the podium now, they certainly can. And I thought this was on the general plan update, but is that, so I think we're all set? All right, seen none, we move on to item number six, which is the approval of the consent calendar. The consent calendar items are considered to be routine, and they'll be enacted by one motion. There's no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request that specific items be removed for separate action. Council?
Mr. Mayor, move for the approval of consent calendars, items six, A through F.
I'll second that. To the Chair, do we need to adopt, read the resolutions on these?
No, you don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Christine?
Councilmember Ramon?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Groll-Cottas absent. Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
And we will now move on to item number seven, reports to council. And first, we have an update on the South Bayside Waste Management Authority.
Mr. Mayor, you have the report to council in your packet. I don't have anything to add to that, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mora. Any questions for Mr. Mora on the council report? We will thank you for that. Brian, and we'll move on to our public hearing, item number eight. Item number eight, A, is a consideration of adopting a resolution setting the citywide traffic mitigation impact fee through June thirtieth, two thousand and nine. This is a continuance from October twenty-seventh, two thousand and eight City Council meeting. So I will open the public hearing on number eight, A, and it looks like we have a report.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I'll just briefly review how the, this amount, twelve hundred and five dollars per trip, was sent, and how does it work. What you have in your packet is a study that's based on the citywide traffic model. You've seen a study before when you adopted the ordinance. This is actually, you're just setting a resolution, setting the fee for this year, but the study goes into all of the anticipated cumulative growth through the city's general plan, and that amounts to three thousand eight hundred and twenty-three trips, new trips, that aren't traveling on city streets right now. And that's during the P.M. peak hour, and the improvements needed to maintain the level of service at the city's intersections add up to four point six million dollars, more or less. The Holly Street widening and industrial road, the Britton Street widening and industrial road, modifications to the interchange at Holly Street and U.S. one oh one. Now, when you take that four point six million dollars and divide it into three thousand eight hundred and twenty-three trips during the peak hour, it's twelve hundred and five dollars per trip to fund those improvements. So when a builder comes in with a building permit, they pay a fee that's based on those trips, and just to make it easy for people, usually it's converted into square footage or units or some, something easier to, that they can do the business planning on the basis of. The fees they pay go into a special fund, and the fund is then used to complete those improvements. As if the projects cost more than the current estimates, because these are, this fee is currently just based on estimates, the fee has to be adjusted. Likewise, if the projects cost less, that never happens, the fees go down, but we do usually see it going the other direction. So with that, we have noticed this hearing, and I have not received any calls or questions or concerns about this. My experience, this is a very reasonable fee, and I would recommend approval.
Great. Thank you very much. Council, questions for staff?
I had a question, Robert. Did you mention that it was just going to be for one year? In other words, we look at this every year?
Yes. Yes, this, this is the fee for, through January thirtieth, June thirtieth, two thousand and nine, excuse me, and we'll, we'll look at this fee each year and evaluate the cost of these three projects. This will come back to us each year, and we'll vote on each year. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. With that is public hearing. Is there any public comment on this item? Mr. Mayor? Yes. Actually, I did have a question for, I'm sorry. No, no. The quick question was regarding the five-year clock. So we passed this ordinance, the monies that are collected over the next twelve months have to be spent within five years of us collecting on these projects. Is that correct, the way I read it?
That's, um, there's, there's actually, the law's written that it has to either be spent, that's the ideal. I mean, the law's written so that the city just doesn't sit on this money and actually uses it for the projects that, for the purpose it was intended, and it's certainly written so that this money doesn't go in to, say, balance the general fund. But the projects either have to be completed, or the city has to have developed a capital improvement program that shows that these projects will be completed. So if you, if you have a schedule to say, these are going to be done, and you have adopted that capital improvement program, that, that meets the purpose of the law.
Okay, maybe I just got a little more confused, because the way it's written here, if the revenues are not used within five years, so it strikes me that five years and a day, the money's gone.
No, but the second part, that says, a plan for implementing the intended projects must be prepared.
I stand corrected. Thank you. All clear? All right, again, I seen, thank you very much, Mr. Well. And if, seen no public comment on this, we do have public comment, great. I'm sorry, if you're going to speak, you have to actually come over, come on up to the podium, please, so we can hear you in the microphone, you'll be on the transcript.
Hi, I'm Mark Lockenmeyer, President of HIA. I had a question. When you build the building and you allocate the amount of trips, is it the square foot of the building and the parking allocated to the building? How do you allocate the twelve hundred and five dollars? For instance, I know I was here last week, a building's going to be built on being in Old County by Arada, it was approved, I think it's a sixteen-thousand-foot building. How, with something like that, how do you allocate the costs?
So why don't we register that question? Perhaps we'll have another question for public comment. I see somebody else, and we'll have staff quickly come up and address that.
Honorable Chair, San Carlos, I urge the City Council to get busy and start studying and developing a capital improvement program so that we don't lose those funds.
Thank you, Mr. Claire. Any other public comment? Great. Mr. Well, if you'd like to adjust the question at hand?
Yes, the very last page of the, of the attachment is Exhibit A to the report, and that lists the trip generation rate by land use, so it has a land use, office, laboratory, manufacturing, and so on. The I.T.E. description, that I.T. stands for Institute of Transportation Engineers, a code that goes with that, the unit of measurement, and then the trip generation rate. So you don't have to count the parking, it's actually the square footage of the building, typically, that's used for most of, most of those examples. You see where it says D.U., that's Dwelling Unit. Hotels are done by rooms, and all the rest are done by square footage.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
To the Chair, I'll make a motion to reclose public hearing.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Council discussion? Seen none, I will entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor, move to adopt Resolution number two thousand and eight dash?
Seventy-five.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, establishing the traffic impact mitigation fees for fiscal year two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine. Second? I'll second that. Great. Ms. Bailey?
Councilmember Ramon?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
And we are, also have a public hearing tonight on item number eight, B. Oh, no, we don't, that is continued to our next meeting, excuse me. So we are so noted, but item number eight, B, is continued to the December eighth. I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm seeing three waving, count the staff members.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's, I believe it's December eighth, not, not the next meeting, but two meetings from now.
Right, I was trying to clarify, I'm not when you guys were waiting for me.
Just wanted to have it on the record, that's.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. So it is December eighth. Is, will it, did that cover all three of you? Okay. Hey, it's just, I'm just glad you're listening, and thank you very much. All right. All right, so that will be December eighth, two thousand and eight, by the way. Okay, we will move on to item number nine, A, which is the Redevelopment Agency Public Hearing.
Good evening, Honorable Chairman and Agency Board. I'm Mark Suwaki, Economic Development and Housing Manager, here to present the midterm review of the five-year implementation plan and ten-year housing compliance plan, tonight for adoption. This midterm review was previously presented to the Agency Board as a study session item in both January and July earlier this year. Staff incorporated feedback from those sessions, as well as input from the Economic Development Advisory Commission into the attached document, and noticed this public hearing for formal adoption as statutorily required. All projects and activities that are undertaken by the agency must be identified in the implementation plan. During the five-year plan period, the agency must review and update the plan to show progress and address any changes that have occurred. Current statutory planning period began in two thousand and four and ends in two thousand and nine. San Carlos did not adopt its current five-year plan until two thousand and six, so this midterm review is actually preceding the next planning period by less than a year, and we will be presenting the next five-year plan in the spring before the start of fiscal year two thousand and nine. By design, the major projects and activities in the RDA implementation plan are largely the same as those presented in our economic development plan. The RDA provides much of the funding for our economic development in San Carlos. Here you can see the project area in blue. For activities to be included in the agency's implementation plan, there needs to be a nexus to improving blighting conditions in this area. The existing implementation plan includes an assortment of projects which have been loosely organized into planning activities, capital improvement projects managed by Public Works, site development, and housing programs. Please note that by law, twenty percent of redevelopment tax increment revenue is segregated into a restricted fund to improve, increase, and preserve low and moderate income housing in San Carlos. The issuance of an additional seven million dollars in bond financing last December has allowed the agency to add a significant number of projects to the plan. As of the beginning of this fiscal year, the agency had fund balances of five point eight million dollars in the restricted low-mod housing fund, and eleven point one million dollars in unrestricted funds that could be used for housing or non-housing projects. The inclusion of these projects in the plan does not indicate final approval. Agency projects and program costs remain subject to consideration of the council and agency board as part of the budget process. This is the forecast for the agency non-housing revenues and expenditures for the plan period that ends with this current fiscal year. Projects have been added. They're indicated by footnote two in your, in your report. Some of the allocations have also been revised. In particular, we've added a marketing strategy and facade improvement grant program that we, we are looking into. The Holly one oh one interchange, Holly Street and Britton Avenue widening, transit village connections, and Old County road improvements have all been added with the midterm review, as well as a potential eastside opportunity investment that could be the Landmark Hotel, or Wheeler Plaza, or some other significant project. Some significant project allocations that would extend beyond this five-year period are two point six million dollars allocated to the Holly one oh one interchange project, six hundred thousand for the Britton Avenue widening, widening, and four hundred thousand for connectivity to the proposed transit village. On the restricted housing fund side, we increased the allocation for the first-time homebuyer down payment assistance loan program to eight hundred thousand dollars in anticipation that households purchasing BMR units at the one thousand El Camino project will use this program. I know this question has, has come up before. There are currently twelve, twelve of these down payment assistance loans outstanding of approximately seven hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. At our peak in oh four, oh five, we had sixteen loans outstanding for nine hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Although we've actually budgeted this, under expenditures on the table here, these are actually loans from the agency, they don't show up as expenditures, they're balance sheet items. We lend the money, we get the money back, so it's not actually an expenditure, but we budget for it, so we know, we know that we're doing it. Other projects that have been added include a proposed review and modification of the BMR ordinance that we will probably see in the spring, as well as an unidentified housing project. It's important to note that under redevelopment law, the housing fund balances cannot be allowed to accumulate in an amount that exceeds the prior four years of twenty percent housing set aside. That amounts to about three point five million dollars. As you can see at the bottom line, we are creeping up over that amount, which means that during the next fiscal year, we're going to have to identify a project where we can spend at least two million dollars or more to either improve, increase, or preserve housing affordable to very low, low, and moderate income households. There's a variety of ways that we can do that, but it's something that we do have to start focusing on. Staff recommends adoption of the resolution to approve the midterm review at this time, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Suwaki. Questions? Yes? Yes. Councilmember Ramon?
Mr. Chairman, I would, looking at page fifteen of the report, we do talk about the first-time homebuyer mortgage assistance, and according to this, expenditures since two thousand and four, two thousand and five is zero dollars. So I just wanted a reconciliation, have we done anything with this, or, because I got a little confused during the press.
Right. So I actually went back, and it looks like there was a loan that was done in oh four, oh five, and it doesn't show up again because it's a balance sheet item, it's not an expenditure item, but just looking at our financial statements, I could see that we've, we had increased the amount that we had, we had lent out under the program. I think that was the last one, and it's likely related to the Pacific Casienda project. So because this program is for low and moderate income, it's typically related to when there's BMR units that get produced. So if somebody was to take out a down, a down payment assistance loan, they have to, they have to meet income eligibility, which means that they're probably not buying a market-rate home. So when we have BMR units that come available, we're likely to make these loans.
And so the expectation is then with Salvatoris, that might be there. The other question I had was just, in terms of capital improvements inside the area that we want to reduce blight, is undergrounding utilities one of the options that we have at our arsenal?
If you can make the finding that it does improve the blighting conditions, which can be economic conditions, so yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Grisilli?
On the, on the first-time homebuyer's assistance, do we have an active list, or is that some of the generalist projects?
No, we keep a BMR waitlist that has actually gone back as far as the Pacific Casienda. We've had two units that have turned over in Pacific Casienda in recent months, so we've had an opportunity to actually go through the list and, and see who's still, who's still interested, who's still eligible. But the list is over eighty households.
Okay. And then will we also, on the website, update folks when the, the one thousand El Camino is beginning to open, so they know what deadlines and so forth?
Yes, my understanding is they will be marketing that sometime around March for a June occupancy.
Right. And then for this, the two-million-dollar plan and program, if we're going to see this back within a year, is that right, to start the next five-year development period?
Yes.
That's very, that's, that's a big project.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll be seeing that within the next, any, what are the plans to come forward to some of those?
Probably in the spring, related to the budget process. I think that's a good time to do it. But what you're seeing is, is the workings of what it's probably going to look like. What I did in What, what I did in this plan is actually add a, a 10-year forecast, so you could get a sense of what's beyond this planning period.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. So counsel, do we have any discussion before we move to action? I mean, Agency, Directors?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a, a motion to adopt Resolution Number RDA dash...
One five five.
One five five. Resolution of San Carlos redevelopment agency, stopping a midterm review of the third five-year implementation plan and 10-year affordable housing compliance plan for the Agency's redevelopment project area.
Second. Great. And if there's no further discussion now, Ms. Bowden?
Director Ahmad?
Yep.
Director Griselli?
Yes.
Director Royce?
Yes.
Chair Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. There was, this was a public hearing, and we, we probably should ask if there was anybody.
Sure. Just to be formal, is there any other question from, or public comment from the public in hearing this item?
We need to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Okay. Great. Seeing none, motion approved. Well, I appreciate that. That's actually your job. Thank you very much. We move on to item number 10A, which is the, consider the planning commission and general plan advisory committee recommendations for preferred land use alternative for the general plan update.
Who was 10A last time?
Yes. And again, just to, just to clarify, counsel already took actions on studies, study area seven, 10, and 11, and we continue the remaining study areas, which is one through nine, and in addition, the parks, open space sites, and the vacant land map, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. As you know, several, as the mayor just mentioned, several of the study areas were dealt with at the last meeting on October 27th, and that was areas seven, 10, and 11. And tonight, we'll be focusing on the other study areas and also the neighborhood hubs map and the open space map. And as with the last presentation, Mr. Nowak is here from DCME, and he'll be assisting me with the presentation tonight. In terms of tonight's meeting purpose, the meeting is to get your input on the preferred land use alternatives from the Planning Commission and the General Plan Advisory Committee, and also, we'd like you to review the remaining study areas and the maps and, and hopefully come to consensus on those issues, so we can move forward in the process. As noted from the last meeting, Steve is going to walk you through each of the study areas very briefly. So he's going to start with the General Plan Advisory Committee recommendations, and then he's going to talk about the hubs map and the open space map, and then show you the specific changes, only those specific areas that were recommended for change by the Planning Commission. And once he concludes, we will be available to answer any questions of the mayor of the City Council. Thank you.
Mr. Nowak?
Good evening. Mr. Sadez has stolen my introduction, so I'm just going to plunge right in with study area one, the next slide. And in study area, and I'm going to go through all of the G-PAC recommendations first, and then we'll focus in on the Planning Commission changes. Study area one, the key feature in study area one was adding mixed-use medium density along San Carlos Avenue, and this would be bringing in a commercial element to an area that is, right now, is primarily residential. And keeping in mind, this is certainly a long-term plan, but the idea is to bring more commercial commerce and kind of vitality onto San Carlos in the long term. Study area number two includes mixed-use low density along East San Carlos Avenue. So this, again, this is a, a change, and it also then includes the medium density mixed-use along the west side of El Camino and, in the southern part of town. Sorry, the northern part of town, excuse me. Study area number three, the southern part of Laurel and El Camino, adds neighborhood retail along El Camino, and then it includes a low-density residential, or along El Camino and Laurel, and then low, surrounded by low-density residential. Study area number four is the same as the existing general plan, and this is the area around Quarry Road and Old County and industrial, and it is a planned industrial designation. Study area number five also is same as the exist, existing general plan, planned industrial uses. Study area number six adds some general commercial along Skyway Drive. Of course, this is on the east side of the Bay Shore Freeway, just south of the Holly Study area number eight includes planned industrial, which is, again, the same as the existing general plan. Study area number nine adds general commercial along Howard Avenue at Old County. And then, in addition to the study areas, the G-PAC recommended that consideration be given to looking at neighborhood hubs, and the concepts behind neighborhood hubs, real briefly, were to, to look at the, the long-term possibility of adding small retail nodes in the, the west side of San Carlos to increase walkability and convenience and try to, for people to not have to get in their car if they need a quart of milk or to run an errand. And so the idea was, without actually designating any area, to recognize that, again, in the long term, that the city could look at the potential of additional small, little commercial nodes within this area. So now I'll focus on, well, and the last thing, excuse me, is the parks, open space, and vacant land map. And this map just, again, it just recognizes land that could be considered, that either is in city park or open space, or could possibly be considered in the long term to increase the amount of parkland in the city. And I know this is a, a big issue and a big concern with many residents in San Carlos, and we, we thought this was the best way to at least identify parcels where there is a potential in the long, a long term for adding parkland. Briefly, in terms of the Planning Commission recommendations, I think the, the most significant one was the Planning Commission changed the definition of medium density from 21 to 50 dwelling units per acre to 21 to 59 dwelling units per acre. And as you'll see when we look at the build-out numbers at the end, this has a, makes a difference in terms of looking at build-out potential for the city. They also looked at increasing multiple-family medium density, again, to the 21 to 59 dwelling unit per acre range, and as well as the neighborhood retail mix, medium density. They looked at adding, changing the, the dwelling units for all of the medium-density designations. And so that results in a couple of changes, and we'll go now to study area one. Well, here's the composite map, and I'm going to be talking about study area one and then study area two. Study area one, they looked at two different things. This is where the, the Planning Commission looked at increasing the definite, the density to high density along San Carlos Avenue from the medium density that the, that the G-PAC had recommended, and then the remaining area would remain in medium density with the new designation of 21 to 59 dwelling units per acre. And in study area two, it was just a small change in the area between Oak and Hole, I believe, and that was changing that area to mixed-use medium density, the 29, 21 to 59 dwelling units per acre. So what we've done in terms of looking at the, comparing the build-out numbers, and is looking at the build-out for the G-PAC preferred alternative, the Planning Commission preferred alternative. However, the Planning Commission includes the changes that were made by the council, primarily removing the Devonshire Canyon area. So the bottom line is that you, you are looking at an increase in multifamily units for the Planning Commission recommendation, and a slightly higher increase in population as well, and an increase in total number of dwelling units. The commercial, office, industrial, and the actual overall jobs remain the same in both the Planning Commission preferred and the G-PAC preferred alternatives. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much.
I have a question through the chair.
Absolutely.
Do you know why they changed it from 2150 to 2159?
I believe that they, they thought it provided a better range of density between medium, the low, medium, and high. It allowed for a better range. It also allowed for looking at, study area one, I think, was one of the impetus, the reasons that they looked at it, was to allow a higher density than just the medium density in that study area one around the civic center.
But it substantially, substantially increases the, the multifamily units by, like 500 units, and the total dwelling units by about 450, I guess, 450 to 500 units, I guess, approximately, from the G-PAC alternative.
It does.
So which is about, you know, 30% higher, and again, they're anticipating 1,100 more people, population-wise, so it would be about, again, 30%, 30%.
Excuse me, to your point, is the dwelling unit increase the population, the direct correlation to the population gain?
Yes, it would be, because you figure persons per household.
And, and, I'm sorry, just to try to contribute the point here is, and was the primary gain in that area between, I think it's, what, Oak and Hole? Is that where the primary increase is? I, as I looked through it, I thought there might be, it might be more concentrated in that area because of the new zoning. Is that true?
Well, that's actually a relatively small area. I'd say the primary gain would be in study area one, where it's...
You could scroll back. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I just thought that there were, that there are the existing ones there, so the actual, some of the density gain in the other areas, percentage-wise, might be more significant for that neighborhood. That's what my concern was.
Yeah. Can I, can I add to that, Mr. Mayor? I think that from a land area standpoint, in, in the medium range, and I, what I'd like to do is show you a table in a second, but the medium range only going up by nine units covers so much of the city as you can see. But what it really does is it, again, you've got to think of it as a maximum, and it provides more flexibility in that range of development. So it gives you more flexibility and your financial feasibility to do things. Now, in the orange area, it went from, you know, they, the G-PAC didn't have a high-density range at all. They, they just stopped it at 50 dwelling units to the acre. So the Planning Commission then added the, they wanted to add high-density in that area, that orange area along San Carlos. So that's pretty significant. I mean, that's a 20 dwelling unit to the acre increase in, in that corridor there. So that's, that's a fair number. I would say that, that, but it's, it could be that there's a balance. Of the 512 units that this adds, there's probably a balance between the two areas there, along the orange and the brown area in area one. But what I'm seeing is that nine units isn't quite, I think, as significant as adding high-density.
Thank you. Yes, please.
So especially in area one, we're moving from median density to high density, can you relate, like, like Pacific Hacienda across the street? I'm sure that's in high. What's the units per acre on that? Do we know?
That's 72 dwelling units to the acre. So the Cherry Street project that the council recently saw is 63 dwelling units to the acre.
Examples of high-density.
Yeah, and 1,000 is 72 dwelling units to the acre, 1,000 El Camino Real. So many of the, of the new projects that we have seen are in the high-density category.
Thank you, Al.
To that point, so if we adopt the multiple-family medium-density new unit number from 21 to 59, does that mean, and I'm sorry, was it the, the G-PAC alternative was to leave that at median density?
The G-PAC alternative was to leave that at 21 to 50 units per acre.
Okay, and then, and then the Planning Commission...
Up, they upped the number to 21 to 59.
I understand. So, in reading the report, that there were, that would leave us also to have some legal non-conforming buildings in that area, is that correct?
Yes, uh, yes, that is, Mr. Mayor. So we did an analysis. Once we knew what the densities would be, we went out in areas one and two, where most of the apartments are in our community, and we, we looked to see how many of those units would be, become non-conforming, and we determined that there were 24 properties that would be then legal, legal non-conforming units. In, in the city of San Carlos, which is a little bit unique to other cities, if one of these buildings is destroyed by some natural disaster, they could rebuild to where it was when it was constructed. So even though it's a non-conforming use, and you have a lower density than you, when you first built it, you could rebuild to what you had with a use permit from the Planning Commission.
But that's only in the case of a natural disaster. Here is one of my concerns in reading and creating a legal non-conforming standard, is that if, if somebody owned a, a piece of property now that is conforming, and we make it legal non-conforming, let's say they get, I don't know, what's, 30, 40 years into a apartment, we need to rebuild it, we need to reconstruct it, just to keep it, keep it up and keep it nice and keep it attractive, that this would create a non-conforming condition for it, unless we chose to, to broaden the language about what you could do. But my point of view on it was, I'm not so comfortable creating, when there's these long-term investments that people might have, and they get in a situation where they actually can't fix it up, or couldn't rebuild it without a natural disaster. And so the one thing I wanted counsel to consider and staff to maybe reflect on is, if we, if we decided to adopt this median-density standard for this area that we consider altering the code to allow reconstruction after, that's usually a BlackBerry or something, so if anybody is, can turn off their data roaming, that would help that sound. But, so my point is, if we could define a reconstruction standard, let's say, I'm just, I think there's more study than this, but as an example, after 40 years, you can rebuild at the same density of that existing legal non-conforming building. And it's just to, to protect a long-term investment for somebody that, that is not, wouldn't, it's, it's upgrading an existing condition which couldn't currently happen within our code. So one of the things I'm a little uncomfortable with with this designation is creating that situation. If that was a remedy that council and staff felt like was amenable, that would make me, you know, less concerned about identifying this area as only medium-density when we have high-density in that area. So that would be the way we can make a remedy for that situation. Is that correct? Something counsel has to consider?
Yes. Every city makes its own determination on what a legal non-conforming structure is, and typically, yeah, just like us, we, we have an ordinance that talks about non-conforming structures, and it's really a legal question, I think, for the city attorney, but I believe that we control our destiny in terms of the legal non-conforming ordinance, and we could change it to reflect what the council's direction is.
That's right. There would be implementing measures with the general plan, and if you were to create legal non-conformities that you wanted to allow to rebuild in the same footprint they have now, and not have to go to a higher density or a lower density or whatever, you can just have an implementing ordinance or modify the legal non-conforming ordinance we have now for non-conforming uses to allow it to happen.
Great. That's, because it just seems to me we're changing the game on existing landowners, and so if there's a way that we can accommodate something that we already have accepted, then it's, would be something to be worth considering. Other questions for staff?
I have a question. Mr. Sadez, does staff have a, a recommendation on, on whether it's 2150 or 2159?
I, I would say that, I'm not going to give you a recommendation, because I think that G-PAC and the Planning Commission have given you one, but I will say that the 21 to 59 gives you more flexibility. Again, as I said, in the marketplace, if you're looking to have people invest in your community, it, it's better to have more density flexibility. It doesn't mean that they will always build up to the maximum, but with the parking requirements, open space requirements, setbacks and height... open space requirements, setbacks, and height, there's a lot of restrictions that they have to deal with, so it gives you more flexibility of what's realistic from a marketplace standpoint.
In addition, Mr. Severe, I mean, your high-density starts at 60, right?
That's correct.
And so you're really just filling the gap. If you stopped at 50, you'd have a gap between medium-density and high-density as what 55 units would be. So it's a practical consideration. It does give you the additional flexibility to have that gap accounted for in some fashion in one category.
Yeah, the other counterpoint to that perhaps is if we left it at current medium-density, somebody came in with a project that needed more units, it's also could go through the process, and we could, we can allow for that. I have to say, just for, again, for council discussion purposes, just because as we go area by area, it's hard to large, to have the larger discussion. One concern I had was adding, I guess it's 1,121 to the population should it all build out. We, you know, we're in a situation already where infrastructure is one of our biggest issues as far as finances and so forth, and I worry a little bit about increasing, potentially increasing the population in a way that just places a greater economic burden on our, on our infrastructure. So that's, by not, if we, if we, if we went back, if we didn't extend it to 59, there's also perhaps a little bit more of a population control element for council and for commission and staff in moving forward. Again, it's just a population concern from my standpoint. Other general concerns or questions, Councilor Ross?
Mr. Mayor, I guess I was curious about, thanks about the neighborhood hubs and the open space.
Mm-hmm.
Today, do we have a percentage of area for San Carlos that is designated as open space?
Yeah, I believe we have that number. It'll take just a moment for us to dig it up, but I think we can get you that number.
So with that, is there, if I could also know, what's the delta that G-PAC is recommending? Is it more, is it less, is it the same? So that's question number one. Number two, I guess I wanted to talk about the neighborhood hubs while we do that. In discussing neighborhood hubs, Devonshire Market is used as an example quite frequently. I go there and I pick up milk and stuff like that. What I do know about Devonshire Market is that it's at the corner of a very busy intersection and across the street from a school. So I guess my question is, for a market like that to be successful, is that the type of traffic and population area that it needs?
It would need a fairly high--
A rumble? It's on the other side.
There's not much--
It's in the area.
It's in the area. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I mean, you would need a fairly high degree of, at least of foot-traffic, you know, to maintain a store like that. The idea, the idea set forth by the G-PAC was the, the size would be kind of scaled to the viability of the, of the business. And I think it is a challenge to, to have a market like that succeed, but, you know, I think the idea was, the conditions are changing, and it may be much more viable for people to be able to walk to a store, and they may be more willing to do that, to either pick up things or, for services or whatever, and I think they're really looking at a long-term opportunity, basically. And I should mention that at the beginning, we actually had designations kind of equidistant throughout the map, and we took those off. The idea was really to let it, if they were to occur, to occur with very strict policies about where they would occur, the conditions under which they, they could occur in terms of setbacks and screening and, you know, compatibility with residential, the types of uses, that would have been flushed out had that been put forward by the Planning Commission.
So procedurally, and again, if you have a question, we can jump in, but what I'd like to do is we'll finish any other general questions we have right now, and then we should go area by area. We'll take some public comment, and then we'll go area by area for discussion.
Sounds good.
And the only other thing, so if we have any other general issues, I would just remind everybody that I think the next step in the process, Mr. Severe, is policy discussion with G-PAC?
Yeah, that's correct.
So as, if anybody has some general comment on where we'd like to see some of the policy discussion take place, I know I have one, please, we should maybe mention that maybe this time in a general sort of way, and then again, if anybody else has perhaps a code thing they'd like to think about with some new designations, again, similar to what I mentioned, again, if we, we should look at a code if we're going to consider, if you could also lodge those at this time, because I think that's sort of the general part of this before we get specific.
Mr. Mayor, really quickly, before you move on, the number is 135 and a half acres total in the community. That includes parks and open space. But we don't have the delta based on the vacant lands that are included here. We can certainly get that information in the future for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That sort of rolls into my question with the neighborhood hubs and the parks and open space. You know, in the, in the parks and open space specifically, it says, "Could this map or all existing city parks, open spaces, publicly-owned vacant land, privately-owned vacant land, and privately-owned designated open space?" But we're not specifically identifying, it says. But does this throw a clout over somebody who has a lot that's vacant? I just, I'm concerned, or is this just like a non-binding, gee, we'd like to do it, gee, it'd be nice, situation, which couldn't we do anytime on any of this? I'm just, I'm very concerned with the private part of this.
And it's consistent with our current general plan, and it's, all it's saying is, this is privately-owned open space. Doesn't say anything else about it.
Our general plan currently has this designation in it.
That's correct. So it's consistent with that, so it's nothing different, and we're just saying, here's, here's the vacant open space, but we're not saying that the city has plans--
We're not doing anything new here.
No.
Okay. The same thing with the neighborhood hubs, that's a little bit new, I guess it's not in our general plan now.
That's a very new concept.
And that same situation applies there, where we're not identifying specific parcels. We're just saying it's a nice idea, and maybe someday we'd do it, but I guess, why do we even have to have that?
We're just sort of providing public information, is that what it is, on a map?
Essentially, however, what the G-PAC intends to do is write policy for it. So at this point, it's just a land-use idea, it's a concept, and so what the next step would be to do in the land-use element is to go ahead and say, here's exactly what we mean, and here's how you do it.
But we wouldn't identify any parcels?
No, it's just an area of the city in purple on your map.
Big area in the city.
Half a mile away.
Big area in the city in purple.
A half a mile, everything a half a mile west of Al Camino Real.
That, that part there.
That's correct.
And we're not identifying any parcel whatsoever, we're just doing policy. The next step would be policy on what we, what could possibly happen.
That's correct.
Mr. Landzone?
So that means that if we were going to have neighborhood hubs in any R1 or R1 LD, probably just covers the whole, the whole city. They could be anywhere in the purple.
It's in the purple area?
That's the whole city, yeah.
Well, just about.
Almost, the whole city.
It's about half.
Most of the residential.
Yeah.
Again, my point to all this is just not to, not identifying specific parcels, you know, we did this in Park and Rec where we eliminate specific things in Park and Rec Plan, and I'm just very cognizant of the fact of identifying specific, specific situations here. Mr. Landzone, would you ask something?
Just another question, then. I just haven't focused on the neighborhood hub that closely. So that means if anyone's house, they decide they want to tear down a house and put a neighborhood like the Devonshire Market, they could do it and be consistent with the general plan if you adopted that policy? We wouldn't have to re-designate land in the general plan, it's consistent with the general plan.
They would have to go through a pretty stringent use permit process in order to do it, and it would have to conform to the policies that would be set forth in the plan. But for just a point of clarification, excuse me, the Planning Commission recommended not to proceed with this map, just so the council's clear on that.
Sure, we understand. So I guess it's partly a procedural question. If we sort of say, hey, we like the neighborhood hubs idea, the potential of that idea, that it needs to go through the policy point before we can, we would be able to maybe see if we understand what the implication of that policy would be. Is that fair?
Okay. I don't have any problem, I just want to make sure that we're not locking this in. I'm sure the city attorney's not on his head, he's the same way as I am.
Not yet. Because, again, these are not decisions made in concrete, this is just direction being given through whatever plan will then come back to you in the future.
Okay.
That's all questions.
Sure. So again, on the, I've put forth one code change thing, if we consider the medium-density situation, or, and we can create legal non-conforming standards, that I would, I would let council to consider asking staff to come back with a, with a code change to accompany that, that would create a reconstruction clause within that to be defined as someone could reconstruct to the, what their current land use was, not to, not to go beyond it, but to reconstruct it into a condition that was, again, new, which would be, I think, to the benefit of the city and to the landowner.
And that could start through the policy, so you could actually have an implementation item in the general plan that says the city shall change the code regarding non-conforming uses. So that's the starting point.
Got you. So I'm just looking, is the, does council consent to give that direction for the follow-on process? Right, so I think we have consent to, for you to prepare something in that regard with little non-conforming things if we enact that tonight through the plan studies. And then, if there's any other policy, I can offer up one, again, just to try to illustrate what kind of issues I think we're talking about, potentially talking about. In the policy discussion, I would like to see us start to talk about height setbacks in town. I feel like where we have added medium-density or higher-density, when there's a setback of second-story or third-story, it just seems to fit with the city a little bit better. So what I would like the G-PAC to consider, and again, to go through the full process to come back, is a design standard that has to do with setback for second-story and above, a consideration in, in medium and higher-density. Is that, again, if that's reasonable to council, then we'd like to give that direction to staff and, and G-PAC and everything as you proceed forward in the next policy stage. Are there other policy or code concerns that, and again, as we get to each area, if we unearth one, we can certainly come back to it. I just wanted to lodge those in the general part. If there's no other questions for staff right now, what I'd like to do is open up to public comment. I only have one speaker card that's buried beneath a mountain of paper here. If anybody else in the public would like to come forward and talk about any of the study areas, you're welcome to do so right after, I have Robert Stafford, which is my first speaker card. You're welcome to, everybody can have two minutes each, and then you can approach the podium, and, please start, Mr. Stafford.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis, members of the council. I think what you're essentially looking at is how to observe the soul of the community, and I attended most of the G-PAC meetings, and I can say it was a great effort. But like all policy, the conundrum is, is policy that's being said is often looking retroactively and then looking forward, and the difficulty lies sort of there and under. When you think about, how do you engender a higher percentage of inclusionary housing as an example, of below-market-rate housing? It's with density. If you look at the numbers, Pacific Hacienda of Cherry Chestnut, it's 68 or 72 per acre. If you look at both of those buildings and the articulation, both in design and thoughtfulness, it was the density that allowed it. Now, we need to distinguish, I think, between massing, which some might say an example of that is Salvatore's site. The differential is, you can have the density without the massing, and I think, Mayor Lewis, that goes to your concern with the sensitivity to how do you get the articulation, so it doesn't look like a box. So I would urge the council to consider the differential between massing and density, and really, when you look at the number of units, these are going to come onto the market with glacial speed. I'm involved right now with three different assemblage, one of which is probably going to take 10 years to put together. If you look at Mr. Zawicki's requirements, both under state mandated and his own goals for his department, there's no way we're going to get there with the density that G-PAC has set out. It simply can't be done. The units per acre under G-PAC, they're not feasible. So we understand the concern, which I think everyone has, which is massing, and I think the articulation, the ability to have a more nuanced view of development is going to get us home. The other thing to consider is, under SB 1818, it's true, you can get up to a 35% density bonus with respect to providing below-market-rate housing. It's never happened. So I think what we're really looking at is, how do we engender the protection of our community so that everyone has an opportunity to live here? It's reflexively the opposite. It's not by making things smaller, it's by giving folks that are committed to community the ability to have high-density and have a high responsibility to provide a building design that's like Pacific Hacienda and maybe a little less like Salvatore's. And so I think if you go back to the policy that G-PAC's put out, overall, they've done a great job. I think, you know, this is truly a community that's not going to accept a five-story building. I think we can all agree to that. I think articulation's the key, but when you look at these numbers--
If you look at these numbers--
We're never going to hit them with those allocations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stafford. Andy Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Andy Klein, Chair of G-PAC. I'm here tonight to strongly urge the city council to approve all the G-PAC recommendations given to you tonight. G-PAC has labored for a year to strike a balance between the various interests within our city. We presented the Planning Commission with recommendations that reflected this balance. As in a committee, we allow for new residential development, various areas of mixed use. We protect our eastside industrial area and allow for new possible retail sites along the 101, all of which are vitally important to the future of our city. The G-PAC recommended, in Study Area One in particular, to take a step back and make it medium-density, and the Planning Commission has made a couple changes to that. They increased the designation for medium-density to 59 units per acre, they made a larger change when they allowed high-density along San Carlos Avenue. I do not think this is, I feel that the high-density is a little too large for San Carlos. Most of the public forums, you heard overwhelmingly that San Carlos did not want high-density housing, they were afraid of their, an attack on the village feel of the city, and they felt high-density in a swath as large as, especially on the San Carlos Avenue, would be an attack on our small village feel. I feel that if we allow the G-PAC's recommendation to go through, the build-out analysis, which was shown by Steve tonight, was 3,000 new citizens, and that's pretty consistent with how San Carlos has grown historically. In the past 48 years, we've grown by 8,000 citizens. So if we're talking 22 years, 3,000's about right for our city. It's not too much, and it's not too little. It allows us to meet the growing need of housing along, in the Bay Area, but also allows us to maintain our village feel. In a couple other study, study areas, four, five, and eight, the G-PAC recommended to leave planned industrial, so pretty much to leave it as the general plan is now. That doesn't disallow for retail, and doesn't disallow for new developments, which I know are important to our city, it just makes the process a bit more public. It allows for conditional use permits, it allows for an open forum for the public to get what we also want out of development, not just for a big box or any other retail just to come in, sit down, and we have no say. I also hope the city council will take into account the neighborhood hub area, or hub study area. This was not allowed by the planning, this was not recommended by the Planning Commission, but it's something that the G-PAC is pretty strongly in favor of. And if you look at your minutes of that Planning Commission meeting, the vote for recommendation was four to one. The Planning Commissioner, who voted against recommending, the Planning Commission recommendations, felt so strongly about the neighborhood hub issue that she said she could not vote for it without the neighborhood hub being recommended to the city council. So I think that's something you guys should take into consideration. I hope the city council will take as much time as needed tonight to come to important decisions that will affect this city for decades to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Klein. Bonnie Clark.
Bonnie Clark, San Carlos, I highly recommend that you go ahead with Brad's recommendation. Being in construction, I have an awful feeling about those buildings that legal non-conforming, the maintenance and rebuilding over the years, it just doesn't make sense to leave those open to deterioration, and so please do write that, that in to keep those, if you're going to go with the medium-density in that area instead of high-density. The other thing is that the 59 units per acre does give a lot more flexibility, and it's important, Mr. Stafford has a very good point. If you're going to have sustainable land use, you've got to go to density, or the developers aren't going to be able to meet the housing needs, have enough below-market units. It just doesn't make sense, and that would allow them to have some open space, and again, the policies, that under the policies, you should demand some open space around these buildings and articulation, and which is, and stepping back. And so I urge you to, to make medium-density go up to 59, at least, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Claire. Okay, is there any other public comment? Please.
Hi, I'm Mark Lockenmeyer. I'm here to speak on behalf of EDAC. Scott Marsters couldn't make it tonight. He's had a cold. The history in our meetings on Area 1 and 2 were that G-PAC originally was under the impression that it was medium density and it was not high density, and that they did not have any issues with the existing high-density projects. And so EDAC's position is, for economic development, that those should maintain at high density. Okay? It was high density before. We don't feel like it should be downgraded to a lower density, that area. Okay? So, and one of the issues that was brought up earlier is, if there was a natural disaster fire, if there was some opportunity to assemble some properties that had been damaged with other properties that were not damaged because of the nonconforming, you probably couldn't do that. And that could open up opportunities for developers or whatever to assemble properties and build a new building, something newer and better. Our other issue is on the study area where the PG and E site is. That's a very strategic piece of property on the freeway with freeway signage, and our recommendation was to allow retail use there without a conditional use permit or through the, whatever the process would be, it'd be zoned that way. So that's on industrial, kind of north of Holly along the freeway. And it also coincides, our position too, is on Skyway Landing along the freeway on the east side of the freeway, also to allow for retail. The PG and E site, we felt was very sensitive because there's no existing buildings on it now. So really, you can't do anything with the site except build something. And we wanted to have the max amount of flexibility to increase the value in San Carlos and tax dollars or whatever else. So from the economic development standpoint, we feel the PG and E site is very strategic and should be also retail use permitted. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Any other public comment at this time? All right, very good. Why don't we proceed to Plan Study Area 1 and have a discussion about that? Any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I think that we should accept the G-PAC recommendation as 21 to 50. I realize there's some other items and density and Mr. Stafford's comment, Mr. Claire's comment, I certainly appreciate that, but that extra, as you mentioned earlier, and as I mentioned, about the extra 1,000 people or whatever it is, I'm just very concerned about that.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to comment on that. I think one of the things I did see in the density numbers with relation to population that Councilman Garcia is talking about, that increase in numbers was also moving from medium density within G-PAC to high density. So, because 50 to 59 is a 15% increase, not the 30% that you saw on the map. So I'm actually, I had spent some time with staff trying to understand the 50 to 59 number, and what I understood was that number was to bring it also into standard nomenclature with other cities in the peninsula. I'd just like clarification. Am I right on that or not, or?
Yeah, and if I can approach Steve.
I'd like to clarify, Mr. Mayor, really quickly here. Talk a little bit more about density because it's such a critical issue. And when you, if you look at this slide here, when you look at the range of housing choices that we have in the Bay Area, you'll see that there's, what I call a continuum from single-family up to high-rise development, and there's, and these are linked to market forces, and they're linked to standards, development standards like zoning. And we need to be real clear with how we're going to put our density standards together. So as Mr. Ahmad was saying, if you look at our, on the right-hand side of the screen there, you'll see a table. And in the first two columns, under single-family low-density, the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see the existing general plan, and then the planning commission recommendation and G-PAC recommendation are all the same. Under multiple-family low-density, on the right-hand side of the screen, what you'll see is that we have, it stops at 15 dwelling units to the acre maximum, and then there's a big gap between 15 and 40 in our existing general plan. So what we have here is essentially, it's ambiguous on the right-hand side. The fact is that there's a lot of development between 15 and 80 dwelling units to the acre in our communities. So I would agree that it's standard common practice in cities to have a housing continuum where you have something more in line with what the planning commission and the general plan advisory committee is recommending to you. So you have that housing continuum along the different densities there. And you can see, the difference is that the G-PAC didn't recommend high density at all. It just stopped here. But again, this, if you just stopped it at this point, there would be, that goes back to the flexibility issue, just in this category. And then this is the category that was just on San Carlos Avenue. So that's the continuum there, and it's to be standardized, it's to be more implementable and more understandable.
And I'm sorry, just so we're clear, on this area of San Carlos Avenue, that the planning commission asked for high density and the G-PAC was at medium density, up to 50 dwelling units, in the current general plan, that's zoned as high density. Is that right?
That's correct. And it goes to 80. That's right.
40, in that same area.
That's right.
Okay. Questions for, any other questions for staff? Okay, so, that's my wish, just to talk about Study Area 1.
Study Area 1 and San Carlos Avenue is an area that I probably walk at least every other day, up and down. I guess I'm more tending towards looking at this general plan as something that's really long-term. I mean, this is 10, 20, 30 years, and we could look and drive down El Camino and see what's happening to density. And if they do it right, as this couple people have talked about, and being on the planning commission for three years, if it's done right, it's not mass. Density's not mass. It's, if it's done right, it can be very nice. And so when I walk up and down that street all the time, if I'm thinking about where I would want to put, when I see what was already happening in the last five years, what's going to be happening in 20 or 30 years, there's a lot of areas in San Carlos I wouldn't want that, and most areas of San Carlos I wouldn't want that. But San Carlos Avenue, which is probably a five-minute walk in, on most of that area on average, to the train station or to Laurel, I either hit Laurel and go down three blocks. You're close to the train, you're close to buses, you're close to shopping, to access City Hall. It's, I think, an area for long-term, I feel, maybe now, medium feels better, but for a long-term planning tool, I'm tending to try to do more, more there with our planning purpose, our planning tool here, our general plan.
Let's go to Mark, how did you, how do you weigh in on the high-density versus medium-density? Mr. Mayor, I'll just make two points. Number one, I'm probably a little bit more tolerant to our density with the caveats that Councilman Lewis put down, that that design is critical. I'm looking, you know, we just added a traffic light at Chestnut because we have a number of seniors who are crossing back and forth. Our seniors need a place that is convenient, easy to walk to, and places to live. And so in that respect, I'm probably more tolerant of density in this specific area. So I would support high-density, but I would at least also support the redefinition of medium-density to 59. I feel I have my concerns about high-density. I realize it's a long-term planning tool, but I also just worry about, you know, the overall, just quality of life and long-term capabilities of this. And I suppose we can't get into a situation where we have, like if we went medium-density in this area up to 59 units and then medium-density in other areas up to 50 units, is that something that doesn't work as well? In other words, it's sort of another subcategory of this?
That's, it's an interesting concept and one that I think ties into this screen that I put up here. And a concept that could be developed that you mentioned earlier is sort of sensitivity to the context of density. And it's been discussed, I think, the council and the public has discussed this. But what this shows is that, let's say you have something on Laurel Street on the left-hand side, and you went up, you allowed it to go a little higher, and then you transitioned a development down in height and density as it gets closer to lower-height, single-family residential neighborhoods. So actually, this idea of feathering or transitioning to be sensitive to the context of where Area 1 is, is possible. So that's another possibility once the G-PAC gets into the land use phase, if there was direction that, you know, well, maybe 59 is okay in some areas, but maybe 30 is better next to established, single-family residential neighborhoods is something that they could look at. So that is a concept that is flexible.
And do we know what the, what the density of Pacific Hacienda is?
72 dwelling units to the acre.
72.
And this is an example of something that might happen in a downtown where you have retail on the ground floor there, parking underneath and residential above. And as you can see in some of those, for instance, it's a three-story building on the right-hand side, but the third story is inside a roof. So that you can't, it doesn't look like a three-story building, but you allow for that flexibility from a design standpoint. So, and on the left-hand side, you can see the stepping back away from the sidewalk at the upper floors, again, being sensitive to the context of the pedestrian farefare like a Laurel Street. So these are all concepts that I think could be considered in the density discussion.
I think the other element of the conversation is flexibility. It seems it comes back to, you know, developer interest, flexibility and so forth. But I can't help but envision, when you say high-density, that we have, you know, complete high-density in that entire area, which for me tends to balance it as more population than I think would be great, would be good for the town in that area. On the other hand, I can see where on occasion, if a developer wanted to put together a couple of areas and could go with a higher density, they might put a different plan together, like something like this that maybe you suggest. So what's the more flexible route for the, for the general plan? Is it to have a median density designation, and then somebody could come together and say, hey, look, if I put a couple together and I step it back, could we go up like Pacific Hacienda because we have that as an example in town? Or is it, again, talking about flexibility and setting tone and sending messages, is it better to say, we go high-density in this whole area as a zoning, but can we pull that back if we start to feel like, boy, there's been two or three projects, and we really don't want to go continue on this high-density route? What's a better, what's a better tool for governing?
Well, I think that to have the foundation for the ability, for to get investment involved at all in, you know, doing housing is the first step. And you have to have density and fair development standards for parking and open space and setbacks. So that's where we're starting, sort of the foundation. But I think to get to the next level where you make sure that these developments fit in to the community and the character of our neighborhoods and the character of our downtown, that's where you get into the form and scale and massing of these buildings. And that's what, that's what I think we're talking about here. And that you can build into the general plan, you can be very, even though it's called the general plan, I think you can be pretty specific as to what you want to do from a design standpoint. So first, you're saying, yeah, we'll think about 59 dwelling units to the acre. However, you need to fit that development into our community on a number of different attributes and criteria. So it's, the foundation is the density, which you do need for investment, but then you say, hey, wait, the design, the form, architecture, that's the other component of this. If you want to try to get the 59, there's no guarantee.
Right.
I just, you know, the higher density, I mean, you know, that's, you've got two recommendations before you. I think that if there has been concern, I mean, the G-PAC, the majority of the G-PAC members voted not to have the high-density category. They did consider it. The planning commission only talked about having it in one specific location of the city. We heard at the neighborhood, at the community meetings, I think, we heard from the council and study sessions, I think it was very clear in the discussions that I heard on both councils, there is community concern about density. So it's, that's very clear. So if you were to go with the general plan advisory committee recommendation and go to 59, that gives you that flexibility. And if you still, you have the discomfort with the high-density, then perhaps that is removed from the equation.
Actually, G-PAC is 50, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
The planning commission recommendation, if you increase just that component of it, that would be the top in our city. So it's really medium-density. Right now, it's 80 dwelling units to the acre.
I just, my concern is, you know, as you mentioned before, you can make it 80 or 60 or 80, whatever, and people will be interested in coming in, but I don't know that the community has the, I hate to drop, give people an idea that, hey, you could build 80. But when they come in here, they're going to find out they're not going to be able to build 80. I mean, Pacific Hacienda, and believe me, I was on the planning commission when, every step of the way on that. And they wanted to come out, the first plan they had was to come out right to the sidewalk with the bigger building, and that didn't fly. And they certainly had the right to do it with zoning and everything else. And I'm concerned that we sort of hold out to the developer that sort of carrot, oh, well, maybe not, you know? And then so it could work against you, too, where you start to get people and they say, well, they're not going to let you do it, so why are we even going to bother? You know, I don't know. I just, I, I'm more, I guess, more realistic, like, this is the rule, and if you've got a really good project, maybe we can change, you know, maybe we'd be some sort of a change to it. But I'm just very concerned about thinking that they're going to, somebody's going to come in here and build 80 units to the acre. I just, anyway, that's my, my comment.
And the, I'll say proposed because it's not approved, but the transit village, the proposed idea, some of the different plans, is that high-density?
It would be medium-density. I believe it's 50, around 50 dwelling units to the acre currently.
Okay, all right. Well, I guess for my money, and we may end up having to continue this item if we end up tied out on it, but my, my impression is that we shouldn't go for high-density in this area. I'm just worried about the overall build out of the town. I do worry about sending the wrong signal. I am, I would, I would consider in this area going up to 59 units. I'm not sure if I like that across the board yet, but for me personally, in this area for 59, again, with some policy discussion about setback design. So that's kind of where I am at this point.
I could go, I think 59 might be a midpoint here, I think. But hearing what other council members have said, I think it's raising the bar there and yet keeping control of what generally people want. We still have a housing element that we have to provide housing for by law, state of California, but 59 might be a midpoint.
Yeah, I'd support that with the notion that developers may come with great projects and will examine them from time to time.
Council, any other comments?
No, I, like I said, I support the G-PAC recommendation, so no problem.
Yeah, well, I, I'm concerned about it. All right, so will, do you want us to just give you verbal recommendation each one, or do you need a motion on each one?
I think because it's such a critical issue, it would be preferable to have the clarity of a motion.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, move for the G-PAC recommendation on Study Area 1 with the modification of medium-density defined as 21 through 59. Just to clarify, medium-density redefined to 59 in this, for this area only? With that proviso, for this area only.
Second thought? Christine?
Councilman Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilman Booker Suri?
No.
Councilman Boyes?
Yes.
Neither of us.
Yes. Now, let's talk about Study Area 2.
And I guess I will say, just to clarify for council on that last point, I'm assuming that our previous direction with staff, we have code change, so we have legal nonconforming now in that area, that they'll come forward with some sort of reconstruction, alteration to the code so that existing nonconforming can be replaced or reconstructed under the right conditions.
I would, I would say, do you want a motion, or?
I mean, I think probably, we don't need to add to the motion, go ahead.
I mean, I think probably, we don't need to add to the motion, go ahead.
Mr. Sebey?
I would just clarify that for general plan purposes, we would come back with actions to take, and we would be very specific that you wanted to change the ordinance to specify that people could do what you want them to do, but not the actual ordinance. But we would say in the general plan, we're going to change the ordinance, and here's how we're going to change it.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Study Area 2. Any questions for, or comments for staff?
I guess I could just briefly, Mr. Mayor, I was curious on East San Carlos Avenue. We've got that as mixed-use low-density. Mr. Sebey, could you help me, give me a visual of what that would look like?
Medium-low density would be, you know, we do have some pictures of low-density. However, it would be 10 to 20 dwelling units to the acre. So what the idea was is to have, I believe it's mixed-use, right? And mixed-use would allow for retail commercial on the ground floor and residential above. So maybe one floor of retail and then a couple of floors of residential above along that corridor. So that's the concept. So that blends in with the existing Laurel and neighborhood there, and it's a pretty heavy-duty industrial commercial service corridor right there now.
Okay. Chris, can I?
Again, I sound like a broken record, but on this one, I also support the G-PAC recommendation because it's so close to the residential area on the east side, and I think, I think that sounds like something that could fit in there, but I think the 21 to 59 might be a bit of a stretch. And again, I understand the concept of, you know, the BMRs and all the rest of it and getting people in, but I would stick with the G-PAC recommendation on this one.
Thank you. Councilman Royce, are you?
I'm pretty mixed on this, I go either way.
Okay.
You know, I'm 660, 4 to 4 to 60.
Yeah, I, my own would be to stay with the G-PAC recommendation on this, still a low-density, mixed-use low-density, which seemed more in concert with the area.
The only modification I were, interest I'd like to put in here is, along East San Carlos Avenue, we have spoken previously about making that much more pedestrian-friendly. So it's just, I don't know if we can capture that intent, but otherwise, I'm happy to support the G-PAC proposal.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the G-PAC recommendation for study Area 2.
Second. Ms. Bowden?
Councilman Lamont?
Yes.
Councilman Bucasselli?
Yes.
Councilman Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes. And study Area 3.
So really, the only difference between G-PAC recommendation and the planning commission recommendation in this case is the change in the median density from designation from 21 to 50 to 21 to 59. That's the difference between the two proposals.
Councilor Collins, questions?
Once again, go with the broken record G-PAC recommendation. I think 50 is as high as we should go there.
There, Councilor Collins? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we.
Make a motion that we approve the G-PAC recommendation for study Area 3.
Second. Ms. Bowden?
Councilman Lamont?
Yes.
Councilman Bucasselli?
Yes.
Councilman Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes. And study Area 4, we could, well, we had a public comment on study Area 5, so let's take study Area 4 separately right now. Any questions or comments on council? I think we have a unison recommendation from G-PAC and Planning Commission. Okay. You have a motion?
Move to accept G-PAC for G-PAC recommendation, study Area 4.
Second. Ms. Bowden?
Councilman Lamont?
Yes.
Councilman Bucasselli?
Yes.
Councilman Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes. And in study Area 5, a comment that represented an EDEC concern, I believe, where the PGE area is, dog-breed area, that to consider retail along the 101, order there would.
That was retail without a conditional use permit?
Can I explain that?
Please.
So my understanding, even though, see, that'd be on the map there on the left side or the bottom, PGE plant's pretty much that large parcel right in the middle. My Mark was a gentleman spoke about in favor of promoting retail. So as planned industrial, my understanding is that retail would be allowed, just that a conditional use permit would have to be issued on that for any retail. So when you think about next to the freeway, if retail's going to go in, it's going to be mid to large. I'm sure Planning Commission is going to be involved, and the citizens are going to be involved in a public meeting on what type of retail goes into that. So I'm comfortable, and actually think it's value-added to have that public meeting and that process to occur when retail does go in there.
And this is the area surrounding Pampf as well?
That's correct.
So does this include any office use in this area?
Yes, it could.
Okay. Again, I'm just trying to think about the larger Pampf, so large project going in there, and there's going to be follow-up businesses and needs and so forth. I want to just make sure we're allowing for all that. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Motion?
So make a motion to accept the G-PAC and the Planning Commission's recommendation on Area 5.
Second. Ms. Bowden?
Councilman Lamont?
Yes.
Councilman Bucasselli?
Yes.
Councilman Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes. And then in study Area 6, we have a unison recommendation from G-PAC and Planning Commission. Motion, please?
Move to accept G-PAC recommendation, study Area 6.
Second. Ms. Bowden?
Councilman Lamont?
Yes.
Councilman Bucasselli?
Yes.
Councilman Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes. We are, and in study Area 8, Mr. Sebey, I'm sorry, actually, discussion there, but study Area 8, the G-PAC had an eight to six vote tally in this area. Can you describe maybe what the issues were in that, please?
On eight or seven? Oh, we're on eight now, okay.
Seven we decided to do two weeks ago. We're way ahead of them.
Trying to recollect, Steve, if you can recollect what the change was there. I believe that there was a discussion about including regional retail in there.
To the chair, maybe, does Mr. Klein have any remembrance of what happened?
I'm not sure.
We'll have to come up, though, Mr. Klein, if you do. If you don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you already did. But I did, yeah, I'm sorry.
General, commercial, industrial, that's just planned industrial there.
I was just curious about the eight to six and what that meant.
No, from the eight to six, from what I remember in Al, I may be wrong, and Mary Jar, Vice Chair, might be able to say, but I believe there was discussion, there was some discussion about possible mixed use in this area along the Old County Road. But I, the eight to six doesn't really seem to make much sense in study Area 8, and I'm wondering, is that in the minutes in front of you?
It's in the, yes, in our. Our report, so we were just curious if there was a.
And the other ones, they all seem to have a little bit greater, less discussion, and so.
And I do believe that there probably was discussion then about a mixed use because some of the parcels are rather large.
I just found, Mr. Klein, it was about a special designation for building and construction industries. That's what it was. So there was a discussion about protecting some of the business-to-business construction industries that are currently located there and coming up with a special designation for those. The G-PAC recommended not to do that and just leave it more flexible with the planned industrial designation.
I see. Well, I'm becoming more specific about.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, good. Council, any discussion there?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the G-PAC recommendation for study Area 8.
Second. Ms. Bowden?
Councilman Lamont?
Yes.
Councilman Bucasselli?
Yes.
Councilman Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes. And then we've done, oh, we have nine to go?
Nine.
And again, we have another eight to six, but we have a unison proposal from G-PAC and Planning Commission on Area number nine.
Mr. Sebey, again, do you have any input on that? You know, there was some.
It was the area that you see in purple there, that is commercial, general commercial industrial, which is the one that adds more flexibility so that retail is an outrightly permitted use and does not require a use permit, whereas in planned industrial, it does require a use permit. So there was discussion surrounding this purple area, and the G-PAC decided to go for the purple area there, and I believe the commission did as well.
So this is essentially because that's where the, adjacent to the Home Depot and the grocery store and everything, that adds you a contiguous area of.
That's correct, yeah, there's synergy there.
Commercial.
Okay.
Council, discussion? All right. We can motion.
Make a motion to accept the G-PAC and Planning Commission proposal for study Area 9.
Second. Ms. Bowden?
Councilman Lamont?
Yes.
Councilman Bucasselli?
Yes.
Councilman Royce?
Yes.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes. Thank you very much for that, yeah. It's the 11th hour, I'll take all I can get.
You're on the last side.
Yeah, next time, we're going to be Sam.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're into the parks and open space, is that next? In our report, Neighborhood Hubs comes up next. Do we discuss Neighborhood Hubs next? Any other questions for staff on the Neighborhood Hubs concept?
I guess, Mr. Sebey, I guess the only question I had, oops. I'm sorry. The Planning Commission voted four to one, I mean, if it's just an advisory thing, if it's just a possibility, if it's just a great idea, why was there a four to one vote against this?
On the Planning Commission?
Yeah, I mean, I apologize for asking you this question. I should ask the four people who voted against it, but, or voted.
There was, you know, there is concern that when you bring in, to an established, historically single-family residential neighborhood, let's say, you bring in a market, there's issues with noise and parking and incompatibility between a use, you know? If you have somebody's house at the corner, it's been a house there for years, you get used to that type of use in your neighborhood. So there, over the discussions over the last months and at the community meeting, you know, people have been pretty open about their concerns, and others believe that this is a great, it's an imaginative idea and concept. So I think that on the Planning Commission, that sentiment that we've heard from a number of people about this incompatibility, and also where do you put them? What are the appropriate locations for those? Those were the key issues. And I think that Mr. Klein mentioned, when he got up here earlier, he spoke about the one commissioner who does represent G-PAC voted against all of it because she felt so strongly about the Neighborhood Hubs concept.
But it seems like, as I indicated, I asked before, it's just a, an idea. It doesn't specifically, I mean, it's just like a non-binding resolution, isn't it, in some sense? It's, I mean, if somebody wanted to put something in somewhere, they'd have to go through a special, a conditional use permit, a special, they'd have to go through a million hoops.
As we described earlier, I think, to your point, we don't really have a policy or a description of process. So at this point in the process, it's, hey, if, I see it at least, as more of a, is this, you know, an idea that you'd like to see taken to the next step?
Yeah, I do, too. So I was just trying to identify, I guess they felt that it was just going to, for some reason, going to be a fait accompli. I don't see it that way.
And, yeah, and it's fair to say, okay, it's just an idea at this point, go back and flesh it out to bring it back. This is not a final decision, it's just a guidance that you're giving.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd also just to share my thoughts, that I also, I think it's a good idea, you know, even though it's all just a concept, but, you know, I have brothers and sisters from a lot that live up in San Francisco, and of course, I lived there for three or four years myself. You know, there's a corner store every other street. And, you know, when he goes and buys pasta, he'll go and spend 50% more there. We go to Costco and buy the 12-pack or 6-pack of pasta, and it lasts for three or four months. They actually have a concept, they can walk to it, that's what people do in the city, they pay, they know they're paying premium prices, but they're there to support the at little store because when they need milk for their cereal on a Sunday morning, they could walk and get it. But we're different in one regard. We also have a city that has a big hill, a lot of people going up and down the hill. Devonshire store's been there a long time, but between, we have, what, Britton, and we have Club Drive and along Alameda, the concept of having a place where people could walk and neighborhoods could kind of share and support a company, a business, a small corner store business, and could also pick up something on the way home from work so they don't have to drive downtown where traffic's going to get worse and worse. I think, I'd like to see that carried out there so that we could do something like that in 10 or 20 years.
Any other comment?
I mean, I think it's a really interesting idea. I think it needs fleshing out. In other words, because I think there's big implications on neighborhoods, should something go in, so I think there has to be a lot of careful consideration given to, okay, so now what? You know, it's, okay, we like the idea, so what are those procedures and policies that come in around it? Before, when we identified it, I think we were all uncomfortable at the draft stage that it was identifying particularly parcels, and a lot of them had churches and so forth like that on. I mean, I think another thing that probably is worth considering, I should say, would come under consideration is, you know, does that open up for a nonprofit business? In other words, could come existing church location, start a nonprofit coffee shop as a, I mean, I just don't know how those things work, but my guess is, those are the kind of, we need some practical considerations about how would neighbors, you know, what would happen if that happened in your neighborhood? What sort of hoops or hurdles would you like to see something go through before it could work? Because it only works if everybody's behind it. And then the second thing is, what are existing conditions and how might those be, I don't mean this pejoratively, but exploited to take advantage of this idea. But I think the idea from a, from a, you know, being able to walk more, get out of the car, we have a city with lots of hills, if we can decentralize a little bit, it's a good thing. So I'd like to see it moved forward.
Mr. Mayor, do we make a motion to, what advised the G-PAC, I'm sorry, Mr. Lanzo? Just when you make your motion, if, to the extent that we've only noticed Areas 1 through 9, excluding 7, but this is for residential, I guess last, last time you heard, you considered Area 10, and you kind of voted to leave it blank for now, like a blank slate, not to be residential, but not necessarily be anything else either, so it could possibly apply. So we just take that out of the mix and just have this apply to what's before you on this agenda. Areas 1 to 9.
So Devonshire Canyon was at the last meeting, removed from consideration, further consideration, so if you just say, which is that area in the middle, yeah, so that's not part of this equation.
So make a motion to consider Neighborhood Hubs in Areas 1 to 9.
Yeah.
With a lot more.
Excluding 10.
Excluding 10.
Yeah.
With a lot more comments and thought 7's not in there.
Policy, whatever.
Number 7.
Consideration is.
Well, that's not on that side of town, anyway, so just 10.
I'll second all that.
Mr. Mayor, it just as a point of discussion, it looks like there's some commotion that I wanted to just get clarity on.
I'm sorry?
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry. We're sort of out of order here. If you'd like to, if you would like to consider some public.
Just to verify, 1 through 9 minus 10, so 10's not in 1 through 9, so that's kind of moot.
Nor 7.
Nor 7. So we're not including 7 in this. So is that an amended version? Because we said 1 through 9.
That's fine. So excluding.
I know, I understand.
I got it, okay. Please let me clarify a little further.
Help us.
The Neighborhood Hubs concept. Um, the neighborhood hubs concept is only, um, suggested one-half a mile west of El Camino Real. It does not apply to any of the other areas that we were talking about in the industrial zone. You see, that purple line, um, is one-half a mile, so it's everything one-half a mile west of El Camino Real.
Okay. I'll make a motion to, to look at neighborhood hubs, as you mentioned, Mrs. Vay, one-half mile west of the El Camino Real, excluding area 10.
That's right.
I will second you. Thank you for helping us.
Great. Ms. Bowden.
Councilmember Ramon.
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli.
Yes.
Councilmember Royce.
Yes.
Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
All right. And now...
You're right.
We move on to parks and open space. Uh, counsel, discussion, comments, concerns? None?
You're, uh, welcome to go to motion. I'll make a motion to accept the G-PAC and the Planning Commission's recommendation on parks and open space.
Second. Ms. Bowden.
Councilmember Ramon.
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli.
Yes.
Councilmember Royce.
Yes.
Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
And Mr. Savay, is that complete?
All praise conclude, uh, your consideration unless you have any other policy direction as we move into the parks and recreation, land use element, environmental...
Yeah, is there any other, um, Mr. Mayor, I did have a policy or code?
Well, actually, I have a question of clarification.
Mm-hmm.
So this is not to reopen a discussion, just, I want to get clarification on what we did with study area 11, uh, which is not on tonight, we voted on it, uh, at a previous meeting, but I was confused what direction and, at least in talking to staff, I think there, there may have been, I, I was not clear what we told staff to do. What I absolutely understood was we did not want to put anybody's homes in jeopardy, we didn't want to change land use, but in terms of the traffic mitigation or that this is a gateway, I wasn't certain what we said, so I'm asking for clarification.
Could, could, I'll bring it back as a report, or the other option would be for staff to tell us what their takeaway recommendation was? You want to tell us what your takeaway recommendation was, and we'll see if, if it's clear to staff, then the, uh, council can, if we need to add clarification, we have to bring it back in a future agenda.
Well, the, um, what we understood is that the council, uh, moved to remove that study area in its entirety, so it's, there's no longer any further consideration by the General Plan Advisory Committee for anything in that area, it doesn't exist anymore.
Right.
But there was discussion about, well, okay, um, what do we do now? And, um, in my mind, um, we didn't have real clear direction in terms of what the next steps were, perhaps that's a whole other discussion.
It would certainly have to be, because it's not on the agenda tonight. So, um, if, if you, that's, that was a clarification. That's fine, that's staff's understanding, and if, uh, council, uh, needs, if we want more clarification or discussion on that, then you can bring that up as a, uh, as an idea, but at this point, that's our clarification. Great. Thank you. So we're gonna move on, um, to item number 10B, which is consideration of amendments to the city's strategic plan and six-month objectives matrix. Item number 10B.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, uh, this is the update to the strategic plan and six-month objectives, uh, the first four items.
Can I stop you? I, I made, uh, one error, and I see the, the G-PAC folks that are here tonight, and to those that are watching and telling us at home, um, we really appreciate all the efforts that you guys have put into this. I realize that it's been a really, really difficult process, and as I said at the beginning of the year in my State of the City speech, there is nothing more important than this, than this process, and, and we understand at times it's been contentious, as all things are, and I think the fact that you guys are persevering as volunteers in town, and again, to all those of you at home on G-PAC, is really important to the city, and, um, and, and also with the Planning Commission coming in, there's also a group of volunteers, as we fashion through these things, we take none of these recommendations lightly, we take them all very, um, heavily and considered, and so we want to thank you for your hard work, and, and I mean that with, um, all due sincerity, and, uh, we realize it's an ongoing process, and thanks for your perseverance.
I'd like to echo that. Thank you very much. And now, after that preemptive thing, please, we'll go on to item number 10B.
Item 10B is, uh, the goals and objectives and the update to the strategic plan. The first four suggestive alterations are alterations to target dates for completion. After talking about these items amongst the staff, we thought that new dates that are being proposed are appropriate. The, um, fifth item here, though, is a new concept, is, is something that was brought up at a recent council meeting, is perhaps being a wholly new objective that would be added to the work program. Uh, there, there may need to be some clarification, I don't know whether we've articulated it clearly here in terms of what the intent, uh, might have been. Uh, the, the suggestion or the discussion is, as I went back and listened to that particular portion of the meeting, uh, talked in terms of creating a, a separate board for the, uh, a police board or a police, perhaps a police commission, but the discussion seemed to center around creating a, a police board to manage the operations of the police department, somewhat similar to the fire department. As you all know, we have a fire board that manages to fire, uh, JPA, uh, because we share, uh, that operation with another city, and so there's a whole management structure that's been organized to, to manage that operation. Uh, you could argue that it's better or worse, perhaps, I don't know that it's more efficient from the standpoint that if you go to a fire board meeting, you will see four board members there, you will see a, a finance person, you'll see a treasurer, you'll see, uh, the fire chief, you'll see an HR person, you'll see a clerical person, and you'll see two city managers sitting in the audience. Um, there, the whole structure set up for the management of that particular entity. Well, there was some discussion here of creating that similar kind of structure for police operations, and, and that's contrary to the, you know, the, the basic format of government in the city of San Carlos. It, it approaches something that would be, uh, similar to a commission form of government, where perhaps each of the council members would be in charge of a, a departmental function instead of, uh, and having the, the city manager form of government where that falls under the auspices of, of the manager's direction. Uh, and, and I'm not sure, but that's what I heard when I went back and listened to that portion of the meeting, and I'm not sure that that's exactly the intent of the city council, uh, if you really want to see, to even study that and bring it back. Uh, and, and, you know, certainly there are commission forms of government, I'm not familiar with the other organizations that have standalone police boards for, uh, any particular department. Certainly there are, are jurisdictions that have commissions, just like we have a Parks and Recreation Commission, there may be jurisdictions that have police commissions, uh, and we could study that if that's the intent of the city council. Uh, I don't know that that's a charge that you really want us to tackle, uh, given the fact that we're about to enter into the budget process, we've got a finance committee that's going to be looking at core services and the way that we operate, uh, many of our departmental functions. So I wanted to draw some specific attention of that particular suggestion, uh, it is listed as one of the, uh, the potential items that could be included within the work program, but we would draw it to your, uh, special attention this evening for clarification as to whether or not you want us to pursue that at this time, or perhaps to continue that for further discussion at our next retreat.
Great. Um, so counsel, to that item in particular, are there any, uh, all the discussion, I, I think that was a meeting I was not present for.
I don't, I don't really, I believe in this situation, I think if, if this needs to be discussed, I think we should, we should not do it this evening or put it in our, our goals and objectives, I think we should discuss it at our next retreat, if, if there's interest in even doing that. But I, I don't think it has any, I, I don't think we should have it in here. I think that's way too...
Can, can someone, just for me, help me understand the idea?
I believe that was Councilman Grocott.
Grocott, yeah.
He was in charge of that, so I...
I think, Matt, uh, Councilmember Grocott was relating it to, there's commissions for other organizations, you know, park and rec and, and things and that, why, and safety is a big item, the, there is a JPA for fire, but not for police, so we do, we need something like this, but...
It would just be like five volunteers, no city council members?
I mean, the fire board and city council members, which makes it a, you know, ostensibly a commission that has authority.
Well, that, Mr. Mayor, that's exactly my point. Mr. Grocott isn't here, we're all flying a little bit blind.
But I, I'm just coming to that same conclusion, I'm just, just trying to understand it because I wasn't here.
Yeah.
And then let's, so, I'm sorry, could you just continue on?
That's all I, that's all I remember.
So that's it?
It was just that it was supposedly mentioned.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess the, my, by, and hearing your point, I, that was one of my instincts, is we could, because the date is 2009, which could come up under our next strategic, um, review, we could do it then, uh, or if there was, I was, the only thing I was trying to sense, Vice Mayor, so is if there is more support from council right now beyond Councilmember Grocott, then we should, we could bring it back to a next agenda, that's the other thing I was trying to...
I'm sorry.
...decipher, because, so if, if council feels like we can, we would, specific to this item, unless you'd like to see it on the next agenda, we could decide to put on the, um, uh, the strategic, so if that's your sensibility as well, Councilmember Ramon? Okay. So, um, good, any other discussion on these items?
Questions for staff? I, I have one, and that is, with, um, with Barry retiring on item number two, um, I was, I was sort of hoping that we would, you know, maximize his familiarity with all the different, uh, synthetic turf providers and give us an update, we've been hearing so much about the health and safety standards, all of the different turf products and so forth that we would get. His latest information before he retired, that was the point. Um, so if it's not gonna be for a couple of months, who would give that report?
Well, I mean, at, at this point, I can't give you a determination except for the fact that there is an environmental firm that will be reviewing, uh, all of the data. Now, uh, we haven't named, uh, the person, we are going through interviews to, uh, fill that position, uh, whether or not we'll have somebody on board by this date or not, I can't guarantee, if I stand...
All right, so it's really rolling into the EIR report as opposed to, the environmental report, I should say, um, as opposed to...
Well, it needs to be reviewed from an environmental perspective in, in any event, and determining whether or not that's something that requires further environmental review, but, uh, certainly we can, uh, encourage Mr. Weiss to, uh, Barry Weiss to provide any information that he has, uh, to the city council, he could even give a report at the December meeting if you'd like on what information he might have.
I think it's something that's worth discussing again, I think the spirit of the initial thing was, hey, we're hearing a lot of hubbub out there about the different, you know, health and safety standards, it might be good just to have our current information on, on the providers that we've been seeing and we've discussed, what are the, what are the current health and safety standards based on their materials? Because I think there's, there's available information that we just haven't received yet in that regard.
And, and, and to the degree that we have that information, we can provide it to you either at a council meeting or independent, uh...
Okay, so maybe we can have a conversation with Director Weiss of that, that before he leaves and see if it makes sense for him to come forward with any of that prior to his...
Aside to the actual...
Yeah, or his retirement.